Fire on the beach, face to the sky The stars dance around like gods in disguise Their gold silhouette, you take off your clothes And my heart feels the weight of all I don't know Memories and mountain tops, drunk on Sunset Boulevard With the city of angels singing on Maybe this is just a dream, and maybe we're still asleep I, I will miss you when I'm gone Flickers of cannon fire, his hands raised like a gospel choir If we live forever, let us live forever tonight Helicopters against the moonlight, our holy mother of the midnight And if we live forever, let us live forever tonight Tomorrow will go back to our lives With sand in our skin and sun in our eyes But I know the truth, I've seen the signs And I've seen the golden guards in disguise Memories and mountain tops, drunk on Sunset Boulevard With the city of angels singing on Maybe this is just a dream, and maybe we're still asleep I, I will miss you when I'm gone Flickers of cannon fire, his hands raised like a gospel choir If we live forever, let us live forever tonight Helicopters against the moonlight, our holy mother of the midnight And if we live forever, let us live forever tonight Flickers of cannon fire, his hands raised like a gospel choir If we live forever, let us live forever tonight Helicopters against the moonlight, our holy mother of the midnight And if we live forever, let us live forever tonight Flickers of cannon fire, his hands raised like a gospel choir If we live forever, let us live forever tonight Helicopters against the moonlight, our holy mother of the midnight And if we live forever, let us live forever tonight
Oh Gloria, I feel so much better I feel so much better today And it's not the drugs or the, not the weather I just feel so much better today I've been asleep in the driver's seat, I've been lost in my head for weeks Trying to find what it is I need, too goddamn tired to sleep And then there are other times, I'm somewhere that I lose my mind And never feel like I get enough, so high that I can't stand up Oh Gloria, I feel so much better I feel so much better today And it's not the drugs or the, not the weather I just feel so much better today There are those who will never learn, who build a fire and can't stay warm The only secret to make it through, is to take what's in front of you But fear of death and the thrill of speed, and all the lights in front of me Drive to the coast as clean, faster till it disappears Oh Gloria, I feel so much better I feel so much better today And it's not the drugs or the, not the weather I just feel so much better today Oh Gloria, I feel so much better I feel so much better today And it's not the drugs or the, not the weather I just feel so much better today Oh Gloria, I feel so much better I feel so much better today It's not the drugs, it's not the weather I just feel so much better today I've been asleep in the driver's seat, I've been lost in my head for weeks Trying to find what it is I need, too goddamn tired to sleep When you find your love, you'll find your song Even though you've been digging through the break of dawn You've been pushing, and the push is gone You think it makes you strong, strong But hope, nobody knows where it goes, where it goes Love takes some time to bloom, when it's right to find you When it's right to find you Like sunlight breaking through, when it's right to come to you When it's right to find you When there's nothing left to mediate You take your coat and you close the gate And you grow your hair and branches long And you lose your days in the LA sun Oh, nobody knows where it goes, where it goes Love takes some time to bloom, when it's right to find you When it's right to find you Like sunlight breaking through, when it's right to come to you When it's right to find you We are mostly wasted time, half asleep and half divine Waiting for the faintest light, waiting for these wounds to heal Though we're never as lost and as found as we think we are Though we're never as lost and as found as we think we are Love takes some time to bloom, when it's right to find you When it's right to find you Like sunlight breaking through, when it's right to come to you When it's right to find you I made my home in a tin-tom bomb, and I was so happy With twenty-eight years of free falling Ah, but now it's all guts and I'm ballin' And she was born in a tin, I meant walk up with shit for nerves You know she never learned to talk to adults She said everything's easier in here And like the dancer with bruises who gathers her cash when the music is through No, she don't look back, I've come to look for America too All I ever wanted was a spot in the mountains with an eight-frame cabin And nobody counting our days, or cursing or praising our name But the best we could do is to winter the world like a wild-eyed child Waking up to the noise of East Harlem Don't they see that we're starving? Like the dancer with bruises who gathers her cash when the music is through No, she don't look back, I've come to look for America too And we stole the car on the Fourth of July I pawned my guitar and we drove through the night I've come to look for America too I've come to look for America too I've come to look for America too Like the dancer with bruises who gathers her cash when the music is through No, she don't look back, I've come to look for America too Then we stole the car on the Fourth of July I pawned my guitar and we drove through the night I've come to look for America too I've come to look for America too I've come to look for America too I've been solo, felt the wind roll Like I was a screen door in a thunderstorm Yeah, I've been down, you've been laid out But you always were what I came here for Waiting all day, just for my sake For a bell to ring, for the first thing Yeah, I've been blue, that ain't nothing new It's you, my friend, why get up again? I've made mistakes and I've been hard hit I say so what, so what if I did? I'm the clear eye, I'm the comeback king It's been a rough year, been some tough tears I've lost so fast all that I had But when it's time to, I'll fight for you 'Cause you know you are why I've come so far I've made mistakes and I've been hard hit I say so what, so what if I did? I'm the clear eye, I'm the comeback king Started over, started over again I'm the clear eye, I'm the comeback king I've made mistakes and I've been hard hit I say so what, so what if I did? I'm the clear eye, I'm the comeback king Started over, started over again I'm the clear eye, I'm the comeback king The top shelf tumbles and the wall clocks run The whips, scotch bottles and the soda guns You missed the last train from the city tonight Old friends see each other in a different, different light You missed the last train tonight The Albert City is dark bars drawn Two pilgrims seek a makeshift home You missed the last train from the city tonight Old friends see each other in a different, different light You missed the last train tonight There is a song singing in the dark Don't get too close, it'll tear you apart There is a reason for every season of the heart There is a song singing in the fire Don't get too close, it cuts like a wire There is a reason for every season of desire The subway rumbles under Union Square In the morning finds an unlikely pair Hotel lobby holding hands, don't blink, don't think, don't look in her eyes Is this forever? Is this goodbye? There is a song singing in the dawn Don't get too close, it'll tear you apart There is a reason for every season of the heart There is a song singing in the fire Don't get too close, it cuts like a wire There is a reason for every season of desire Half in light and half in dark is where we start Half in light and half in dark is where we are Half in light and half in dark is where we start Half in light and half in dark is where we are Half in light and half in dark is where we are We are one beating heart